Okay, if what I'll do with Pastor McMullin has not arrived, I'll go ahead and ask our Chaplain, Greeley Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell, if he will lead us in our invocation.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you to bless our families, and we pray and ask you to guide us on our deliberations. Dear God, we are thankful for everyone that's gathered here tonight. We ask you to bless them and bless our young future leaders of tomorrow. I ask you to bless our board and grant us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to make a sound decision. Thank you, I ask you to bless our town staff and all the citizens of our community. These blessings will act for you in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add an item under new business for discussion and possible action on a no parking ordinance, and I'll put that in the form of a motion if need be.
So we have one item to add, are there any other additions to our agenda? That have a motion to accept our agenda?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. At this time, we have official comments, and what I'd like to do first is recognize this evening, I do have with us, we're very fortunate, and the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council had our swearing in this evening. We have representatives from Southview, Grace Creek, and Jack Breat here, and they'll be working together, and this year, our focus is on gun violence and how these young people can help us as far as ways of improving the ideas that we have from the adults. We want something coming from the youth themselves, so we're looking forward to working with them, and we appreciate them being here this evening. And Ruby Marsh, who is Sergeant Major Marsh from Southview High School, she is also going to be an advisor to our group, and we also have Officer Derek Rowland. Sergeant Major Murray, I don't know why I want to call you Marsh, I'm going to change my name. It's Murray. I'm giving you a few names.
Not at this time, Mayor.
It's good to see so many people come to our Board of Commissioners meeting, so it's great for everyone to be here. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I try to be brief, Madam Mayor. I'm glad to see everybody tonight as well. Congratulations to the new Mayor's Youth Coalition Group. I also have to shout out the Girl Scout Troop 1804. My daughter is bridging up from that troop, and I also had the pleasure to serve as a troop leader alongside of these women for a couple of years. Enjoy the NAACP Lifetime Banquet Event this weekend representing the Town of Hope Mills, and would like to also invite everybody to International Folk Festival hosted by Federal Cumberland Arts Council this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I think that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to everyone that came out, especially the young people. If we can get this to be a continuous trend, and we can get y'all to catapult forward for the future, what a great day and time this will be for this country. Madam Mayor, the Military Retirees Appreciation Day is coming up on Saturday, September 21st. A lot of good information I have, new ID cards, benefits. We would like for you to share that with anyone that's out there. And first, the Kiwanis BBQ Cell on the 29th is for the kids strictly, I mean really for the kids, especially the kids in school and the kids in the community. And we need y'all's support so that we can move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Mr. Lake?
Can we move the date back on that so we can have it tonight?
I got you covered, I'll freeze yours.
I appreciate everyone who's come out tonight. It's a fantastic time when you sit here and you look out over the crowd and you see a lot of new faces, especially the youth in the crowd that are here to work with the Mayor's Coalition Committee and anyone else, the residents of town that have come out tonight to join us. Come out again, we enjoy seeing you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This time, we have presentations, our first presentation is from Girl Scout Troop 1804 about teen gun violence. We invited them tonight because we were so impressed. Mayor Pro Tim and myself attended a ceremony at Lewis Chapel Baptist Church that these young ladies presented, and we were so impressed at what they did as young adults that we thought it only appropriate for it to be brought to the town. So I'm going to turn it over to them at this time and let them proceed, and just know how proud we are that you're here with us tonight, and we really appreciate the fact they're, I think the oldest one's 13, so just know they've done a lot, and you'll be impressed.
Please push the button at the base of the microphone.
Is it on? Good evening, and thank you Mayor Warner for inviting the cadets of Troop 1804 to the Board of Commissioners meeting. It was our honor to lead the pledge of allegiance, excuse me, and we are happy to present our Girl Scout Award Project this evening to the Town of Hope Mills. We were orange today to support of teen gun violence prediction awareness. Sorry, I'm short. The Girl Scout Silver Award is the highest award a Girl Scout cadet can earn. It requires that we develop and complete a take action project that will address a local, state, or national issue facing our society today. It must also be a sustainable project that will help make the world a better place. We chose to do our project on teen gun violence prevention. This issue is very close to us. Last year, a former member of our troop, Coriana Young, was killed during a teen gun violence incident. This made us want to bring awareness to this teen gun violence prevention. This one, wow, this made us want to bring awareness to this teen gun violence prevention in our community. We spent many hours creating, designing, and developing a display, a brochure, and a public service video addressing teen gun violence prevention. We designed and dedicated Teens with Wings Memorial Garden for families whose lives have been touched by teen gun violence. Here is our public service video addressing teen gun violence prevention.
Did you know? Have you ever thought about it? What are you going to do about it? Have you heard that telling the teenager that every day for gun violence, this needs to stop? Did you know that each year, 19,000 children and teens are shot and killed or wounded, and approximately 3 million are exposed to gun violence? This needs to stop. What are your thoughts about the fact that black children, going through our seventeen times, more likely the right children, eighteen, about the same age, that have had gun homicide? This needs to stop. What are you going to do about it? Well, you could join me and my fellow cadet corps scouts in Troop 1804 as a much of a public violence campaign addressing the need to stop teen gun violence. For our silver award project, we're bringing attention to this terrible crisis in hopes of opening up dialogue to find solutions for prevention. So help us spread the word. Tell your friends, tell your family, and tell your Olympic officials. From city council and county commissioners to state legislators and the governor, all the way up to the US Congress and the president, it's time we all to report to stop teen gun violence, because enough is enough.
And I'd like to take the time and opportunity to introduce our Girl Scouts. We have Ariana Brooks. Bianca Crawford. And then Miss Smallwood. And we have one of our leaders, we have Ms. Angela Wallace. One of myself, Monica Crawford, and we have a total of seven leaders that work with our group. And we have one young lady who got sick the day of school, and so she was not able to attend. But we really thank you all, and for anybody who wants to visit our memorial garden, our memorial garden is at Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church on Rayford Road. It's kind of between the sanctuary and the fellowship hall, but please go visit there. Those of you who have been touched by gun violence, those of you who may just want to see what it is, Lewis Chapel welcomes anyone, and we also welcome you too. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, we have a presentation by Terry Grimble and Victor Fontanaz regarding a proposal for a partnership with Friends of the Skate Parks Foundation. And they can come to the microphone at this time? Welcome back, we're glad to see you.
How y'all doing? Okay, my name is Victor Fontanaz, I'm accompanied by Terry Grimble.
Chase Johnston, right?
Chase Johnston. So for myself, I'm a graduate of class 2017 from Southview High School, and I've been skateboarding my whole life in the city of Hope Mills. Since I came to the city of Hope Mills, the first place that I was able to find to build a community at was going to be at Terry Skate Shop, at DeVille Skate Shop that was located on Bragg Boulevard. I lived in the Hope Mills area, but we only had one skate shop in the whole city, so everybody had to go to Terry's Skate Shop to find that community to skate with. I was growing up in Hope Mills, and of course, the Hope Mills Skate Park has always provided a safe place for kids to grow up and skate at, including myself for many of years. It's a place for every single kid in the Hope Mills Park itself to discover whatever passion that they have for themselves, and it's been a lot of years that we've always hoped to have something a lot larger than what we have in Hope Mills. It's provided a lot of great memories over the years, but we're accompanied today as a team to talk about rebuilding the park, and hopefully that we can have a presentation together. I have Chase here, who is a local skater now, who is 16 years old, and he'll share his story about what it means to be a skater in this community, and our hopes to have a new park soon.
Madam Mayor and Board of Governors, it is an honor to be here and speak before you. I'm a little nervous, honestly, this is my first commission meeting, so give me a little bit. I have been here for two years, I was born in Las Vegas, Nevada, traveled nearly 2,000 miles, and I have seen quite a few things in my time. I'm only 16 years old, however, I want to see this community grow, and I want to see this community become something stronger. The local skate park over across the ball field, I don't know if you've seen it, many people don't know about it, it's a little slab of meat that we like to call, it's the Hope Mills Skate Park. In the two years that I've lived here, that's been the only skate park that I have known or been able to reach, because I skate around, you know, the town, and that's the only skate park I get to go hang out with my friends with. When it comes to something that means more than me, this skate park means everything to me. I don't, when I started this, I posted one little Facebook post. That post exploded across the platform and has reached you guys. It's reached my friends from foundations of skaters, and it's reached many of the community that stand behind me. For myself, this is no longer about me, about me. For myself, building this skate park means for the future for people who are 12, eight, 11, 18, 32, 92, and so on. So it's an honor and pleasure to be able to share this with you. That's all I have.
Good evening, thanks for having us. My name's Terry Grimble, I'm the Director of the Friends of the Skate Parks Foundation. All right, so I started Friends of the Skate Parks in 2013 to help communities with their skate park projects, because I noticed many of them were ending up with poorly designed and overpriced skate parks. With my extensive background in the skateboard and skate park industry, I noticed that not only does the skateboard industry suffer when a community ends up with a bad skate park, the entire community does, due to the lack of otherwise positive impacts that you would get. We're here today to propose a plan to rebuild the skate park here to a proper, modern-day skate park facility that will deliver those impacts. Friends of the Skate Parks foster skateboarding, we help at-risk youth, and we produce quality skate parks. We have a clear vision, mission, and purpose. You guys will have copies of this, so you will be able to... The youth of today are looking for opportunities to express themselves through sport. While traditional sports don't give them that opportunity, urban sports, on the other hand, represent not only sport, but also a way of life. A skate park is a central place for all these users to train and actively spend their free time due to the attractiveness of a quality skate park, free access, and location in an urban environment. It also attracts wider users and passersby. There are many benefits of having a proper skate park, such as lowering crime, increasing tourism, keeping kids and young adults active outdoors, it promotes good physical and mental health, it builds self-esteem. Having access to quality public skate parks improves the quality of life for the community by providing healthy alternatives for its youth. Skateboarding is the third most reported interest for high school students. The Skate Park Project, formerly known as the Tony Hawk Foundation, has seen a 700% increase in skate park project support from advocates and municipalities since the inclusion of skateboarding and BMX freestyle in the Olympic Games. Skate parks were fourth most used recreational space in terms of total weekly use hours, and skateboarding is the least expensive sport. Out of 21 of the most popular sports, annual average spending on one child only behind track and field and flag football. There's been some surveys done with police officers, law enforcement offices around 37 states. They reported back and said they had fewer complaints about skating around town. They said that the skate park is not a magnet for crime. Visible location was critical, and they said that it increased the tourism in their town. This is the mayor from Trinidad, Colorado, testimony about the impact and how excited they were and how successful it's been. Same here in Carbondale, Colorado. They were very pleased with the impact that they saw, the economic impact. Okay, so if you build a proper skate park, we predict, or we project, rather, that you will receive 36,000 visitors to the skate park per year. We base these numbers based on, there's 85 million skateboarders worldwide. There are 8.8 million skateboarders in the US, which is up 34% from 2019. This does not include many other skate park users, such as BMX riders, roller skaters, inline skaters, wheelchair, motocross riders, and scooter riders, which equals 4.5% of total US population at 14.9 million potential skate park users. If you break that down with North Carolina's population, you're looking at over 474,000 potential users. And the Cumberland County will have over 15,000 potential skate park users. So they would come 2.3 times, but that wouldn't include any tourism either from out of state, which we would get a lot of that. Okay. So, the current Hope Mills Skate Park is outdated and inadequate in meeting the demands of the Hope Mills citizens and fails to provide all the benefit a community should receive with a well-funded and properly-built skate park. The Friends of the Skate Parks, along with Vic Blinds and the skaters of Hope Mills, would like to develop a truly special and unique, state-of-the-art, custom, concrete skate park for the community of Hope Mills. Friends of the Skate Park truly has its finger on the pulse when it comes to producing successful skate parks. And we provide many services, such as consulting, fundraising, designing, building, repairs, maintenance, and continued support through future Friends of the Skate Parks fundraisers and FFF events. FSS has maintained its focus on skate park projects in the Carolinas and has worked with communities of Elizabethtown, Mooresville, Fayetteville, Clayton, Spartanburg, Southern Pines, Myrtle Beach, and Wyville. Okay, so how much does it cost to build? Lamarcos informing that we have 11,625 square feet to work with, rebuilding the skate park in its existing footprint. Skate parks cost $50 to $82 per square foot, depending on the design and the materials that you're going to use. So that puts the skate park at 581,000 to 950,000 for 11,000 square foot park. But because FSS is a nonprofit, we can save communities thousands of dollars by negotiating donations in kind on building materials, negotiating accommodations for skate park building crew, recruit some volunteers to work with our professionals, we can raise additional funds, and by designing skate parks at minimum to no cost. One reason skate parks can cost as much as $82 per square foot is due to its size, location, but is also due to more expensive features and materials, such as granite, marble, colored concrete, which add greatly to the eye appeal and enhance the overall experience of the user and spectator. If you notice on the far left, the skate park there, it's just a gray color, normal color concrete. It's, and it has paint on the sides where you wouldn't ride. You wouldn't want to paint on top of the riding surface, because that concrete is formulated for the polyurethane wheels of a skateboard. The ones in the middle is, you see a good use of colored concrete. This is where the concrete, the color is baked into the concrete, so you get the same riding texture and surface for the urethane. The one on the far right has intricate stained colored concrete patterns, and it also has granite slabs, which is a more expensive material than concrete. So, you know, but it looks nice, though, it really pops. But the one on the far left is fun, too, so you really could do a little bit of that, do a lot of that, it just really depends on where the budget falls. So, possible sources of, to come between, to get to that amount, you could budget money, we could raise money, we can go for grants, and there's also sponsorship, donations, and donations in kind can get us to that mark. Friends of the Skate Park fundraiser events include skate jams, contests, cook-offs, concerts. The skaters of Hope Mills can sell merchandise, seek donations, and provide volunteers for fundraising events. Sponsorships for skate parks, examples include the Food Lion Skate Park in Nashville. They gave 200,000 to be the title of that. The Rogers Family Skate Park in Apex, a family, I'm not sure how much they gave, it was in the, I'm sorry, it was in the hundreds of thousands. And the Hot Spot Skate Park in Spartanburg had a big donor as well. There are grant opportunities out there, and we will help you find them, apply for them, and win them. Timeline, this doesn't happen overnight, as you know. Projects, I've worked on projects that's taken 10 years before. On a fast track, I think we can, if we get the budgets approved, grant approval, and do the fundraising, we're looking at six to 18 months at least before we break ground. Design process, we'll work with the local skaters of Hope Mills and our trusted industry experts to develop a unique design that meets and exceeds the needs of the entire community. Once construction does begin, it will only take us 10 to 12 weeks to complete, and then we will present the skate park to the town. Skate parks are not considered standard concrete flatwork. They require unique shapes, such as concave and convex features and finishes, the sculptural blending of compound radius curves. All must be completed with precision for the skate facility to function properly. The skate park will be designed and built by qualified personnel with over 30 years of skate experience in skate park construction. Only those skate park builders and subcontractors who meet the minimum experience requirements may perform this work. All of our work, of course, will conform to the IBC and the local building codes for concrete. We've done several, this is three of our past projects and partnerships we worked with, Hope Mills and Elizabethtown and Fayetteville. This is our project in Hope Mills, and you can see before and after photos there. They built that park in 1998, it was on a basketball court, they put metal ramps. In '08, the locals tried, they asked to get it redone, and they didn't get very far until we came along in 20, let me get it right, 2017? Yeah, in 2017, we got on board, and we ended up raising $70,000 for the project. We did the design, we selected the builders, and we won a really nice real estate award from Coastal Carolina. That was phase one, this is phase two, we finally raised the money for that, and we're adding a bowl, as you can see in the picture there. And we were rewarded a Tony Hawk Foundation grant for this bowl project. Letter of support from the city of Myrtle Beach. Upon completion of the Hope Mills Skate Park project, we propose to continue to support and promote action sports community by promoting activities and events such as camps, lessons, contests, jams, professional demonstrations, that will attract participants from all over the county, state, region. that will attract participants from all over the county, state, region, and nation. Friends of the Skate Park always looks for ways to continue to build relationships with the communities we work with. In Myrtle Beach, we have produced an annual skateboard event known as the Myrtle Beach Jam, and we've had participants travel in from Canada and Puerto Rico and all over the country for that event. This year, we raised fifteen thousand dollars for the bowl, and we had over two thousand participants. It was a two-day event. Our partners included the city of Myrtle Beach, Coca-Cola, The Border, and many others. I don't think that's gonna play on this. This is a video, but it doesn't look like it's gonna play. I don't know why. Well, that'll make this go quicker. Rowan Park in Fayetteville, we consulted with the city. We picked this location. We did the design of the park, and we selected the builders. We also partnered with the city to provide ongoing skate camps, lessons, after-school programs, contests, and other community building events. We operate onsite at Rowan in the downstairs of the Lions Civic Center, where we have a pro shop snack bar lounge known as the Rowan Skate Center. There was another video, but that's not gonna play either, so. In twenty fifteen, this was our first official project as Friends of the Skate Parks. We partnered with Elizabethtown to design and build their skate park on a fifty thousand dollar budget, which the town secured in a federal grant for skate parks. Once the skate park was completed, we donated the park to the town. The town has told us that the skate park has been one of their most successful recreational facilities and regularly draws action sports enthusiasts from two hours away on a weekly basis. We also do a contest there once a year called the E-Town Ramp Massacre, and it draws skaters from all over the region. Mooresville's new skate park is considered by many to be one of the best in the state. In twenty nineteen, I was hired to be the head consultant, and based on my recommendation, they invested two point three million rebuilding their skate park. Southern Pines is an ongoing project. We have not finished this project yet. The town has committed fifty thousand in the land to us to design and build their skate park. We have raised an additional forty thousand on this project so far, and we have more fundraisers coming. Please come to our Chicken Wing Cook-Off, November fourth. Hey! And then we've also applied for a T-Mobile grant, fifty thousand, and a matching tourism grant, which hopes to get, to get us to our three hundred and fifty thousand dollar goal for a seven thousand square foot. And that concludes the proposal. The rest of it that you have there is just about the FSS staff, my history, and some of our builders and other people that work with us. Here for any questions.
Do we have anyone that has questions at this time?
I don't have any questions.
No, ma'am.
Excellent presentation, and I did not realize.
On your microphone.
Thank you for the excellent presentation. I did not realize that that was that popular. I knew it has, it's now Olympic, competition in the Olympics, but wow, did not realize that it was that big.
Which part?
Skate park.
Oh, skateboarding. Right, right, right.
Because, you know, you used to be on television. You used to be on ESPN all the time. You know, you don't see it on television no more like you used to, so I thought it died out.
No, sir. It's exploding. Since the Olympics, it has really taken off, especially with skate parks.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm like Commissioner Mitchell. I didn't realize it was so big.
It's mainstream now, I would say.
Yes.
You have comments? Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak on behalf of Parks and Rec. I definitely want to thank Mr. Grimble, Vic Blins, and the young man from Las Vegas for coming out. I do think that this is a powerful presentation that comes right after the presentation we just received from the Girl Scouts on curving teen violence. I think that we have got to continue to find active ways to engage our youth through present, through projects like this. So I think the ask this evening is to support the partnership with Friends of the Skate Park Foundation to raise and match the funds for the construction of the upgrades to municipal skate park. I do think we have the track record of creating these partnerships and foundations, especially with the unveiling of the new and all-inclusive playground that was started with the initiative just like this. So I do think we have that track record, and that's something that I'm definitely in support of.
Madam Mayor, I read the presentation earlier, and I was looking at it, and I think one of the initial requests is to initially start a fundraising. So I think that first place we'll start is to move forward, put together a phase, a phase plan. Initial is to begin to come up with strategies and ideas and partnerships to begin to initiate raising of the funds, to include reaching out grant funding as well. And I know LaMarco is pretty good at doing that, so I'd like to put that to motion, whatever, you know. How do we need to go about putting that to motion to move forward with phase one of the thing? Begin fundraising.
Madam, my, my, I support, I strongly support the project. My question was gonna be for the money man, Mr. Holland. As Commissioner Mitchell stated, is it appropriate to ask for this to be in our possible CIP plan or our budget for next fiscal year?
We can definitely add it to the CIP. One of the things that we do with our projects that we have in the CIP is we don't adopt it, so we don't have to do like amendments to it to change it. It's pretty much just accepted. So any change that we can do, and of course, we'll be updating that in February of twenty-four. But yeah, any projects that we wish to add to that, we can do it. I know LaMarco has a list of other Parks and Rec projects that he's always thinking about and working on. So when something like this comes along, it's almost an added benefit to help move that along on the priority list. So, but as of now, there's not any funding for skate parks or anything like that. So we would have to look for funds, whether it's matching or just go with what's gonna be raised, but it's totally up to the council.
Is the location we currently have, is that the best location? Do you need more space than what we have? I noticed all these that are pictured are, look like they have a larger area, and that's what I'm just wondering is...
It really, I mean, ideally, you would want it to be seen by people driving down the road. Like, oh, look, there's a skate park. Let's go there. Where it sits, it is, it is hidden back there. And only people going to the park are really gonna actually be the ones that walk by it and see it, or unless they're going, they know it's there and they're going there. You're seeing a lot of places using, you know, higher, higher-end real estate for these skate park projects because they're, they're looking more like plazas and they're, they're looking more, if you, if you do them right, they look like jewels. They look like a nice park, and it's attractive looking. So you already have some material to work with here with the slab, which we would, we would, we would use that slab already, so, so that it's already there. And eleven thousand square foot is a big enough part, but yeah, it's, it's significant. Matt Hughes is right at eleven thousand square foot to give you an example. But, but ideally, what, from the research we're finding is a, is a different location, but then that could cause major delays. I mean, that's what delayed Rowan so long, is there's people who did not want it at Rowan, and they want it at a different location. So that delayed it for a year or so until it finally ended up there, so.
How large is the one at Rowan?
The skating surface itself is about sixteen thousand, but it's sitting on a whole acre. So if you count all the spectator room and everything, it's an entire acre. If you're gonna do, you know, events and stuff, you're gonna have to have some bleachers and stuff. But you're, we're talking amateur events, even if they're regional or national. You're gonna, you know, you're looking at crowds of two thousand, three thousand people at the most. You're not gonna get the X Games to come in with ten thousand people. You know what I mean? You probably wouldn't even get that if you, if you, if you built a, a place like Rowan. And that's, it's really hard to get these days because it's, it's such a big level thing. And, you know, I don't, I don't know, like, I know there's Parks and Rec conventions where these big festivals go, and they, they barter with the Parks and Rec directors. Come to our city, we'll give you this. Come to our, you know, so everyone's fighting over, you know, Virginia Beach just got this really big festival that drew in like, I think, forty, fifty thousand people or more for a big skateboard event in, in Virginia Beach this past summer. So, but they, that wasn't even involved with a permanent skate park. They built a concrete park on the beach for one weekend and tore it down.
Wow. Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, I guess, the process and approach that we use for the inclusive playground, we started there. And look what we have. I think we should, I think we should probably pretty much follow the same footprint, if it's appropriate. Drew, what you think? The process that we use for the Reece Journey Park, how we started out initially with the fundraisers, and we eventually got it put together.
For the playground?
Yeah, we started out with the fundraiser committee and everything. We started putting together. That was, ooh, about quite a few years ago.
I mean, we could do it that way, but if we want to change the location, we would have to completely figure out, you know, where we want to put it, that sort of thing. If we want to keep it at the same location, it's pretty much the existing footprint.
I'm just thinking size-wise, that if you wanted to, because the Fed were already having one that's larger than, I'm just looking at...
I, I think we, we need not to put the, the cart before the horse. I think the fundraising would be the first thing, and then we can go from there. Because you said like it took a couple of years for some of these, so it wasn't, it's not like a quick turnaround. We're gonna have time to do the fundraising and all that other stuff. So I think let's work on that before we start.
Right, and, and get some of LaMarco's feedback, because obviously, they've already spoken together. So see where, you know, he's thinking this might work.
I guess also my question would be is directing the fundraising, is that gonna come from your group to direct the fundraising? Or is it gonna have to be something done from our Parks and Recs?
I think it'll be a, a combination of things. I do think, like Commissioner Scroller said, the first thing is to approve the movement forward with the partnership. As we raise funds, I do agree with what Mr. Grimble said, visibility. Is it possible that you can take about two acres of the redesign of the golf course and put it there? As golf view is possibly gonna be a new gateway into the town, maybe that's a better location, but we don't answer that question tonight. Tonight, we move forward with creating a partnership, and if through that design and raising funds, it works out that it'd be better here, we keep it here. If it works out to be better, another location.
The main thing I was looking at is if, don't, we don't have to settle. If we could raise a lot of money, we could go somewhere...
And you have grant funding. You have fundraising. There's a lot of different ways. And like I said, even with Heritage Park and the all-inclusive playground, those are two recent projects that we have proven that we raised a significant amount of money through these same efforts and partnerships.
I'm gonna say this, and then I'm done. The time is now. The reason for I say now, we just had the presentation of the young folks talking about gun violence. And one, one of my biggest key, and I heard the mayor speak earlier about the suicides that we have. The time is now for our youth. The time is now to move forward. The time is now to start the fundraising. So Commissioner, not Commissioner, Madam Mayor, Tom, what, what motion do we need to put together so that we can begin to at least start the initial phase of the fund, you know, the partnership?
I think the motion is to approve the partnership with the Friends of the Skate Park Foundation.
It's not tying you into any other day. You're just tying yourself to...
I think approving the partnership opens the door to be able to start the fundraising.
I'll make that motion.
We'll come back to the board later for proof.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of us in favor signify by raising your right hand. Alright, officially, we have a partnership.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm excited.
Sir, let me give you one. Oh, look at that. You know, I love food.
Is they free?
There's my card, okay?
He said chicken. I said where.
Thank you.
I don't have any cards with me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Young man's gonna see you again.
Alright.
Welcome back.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You're so welcome. And thank you for your, thank you for your initiative to get it started. And again, that's the voices of our youth. That sixteen-year-old created this movement for us to get started and take action. So we appreciate everything he's done to get us going. Thank you, sir.
I guess we're out tonight.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you. Alright, next item on our agenda is public hearing. And at this time, we have case number ZNG dash zero zero eight dash twenty-three, a rezoning of two point two seven plus or minus acres from R-ten Residential District to the CP Plan Commercial District located at forty-two fifteen Legion Road and zero four two four oh eight eight five three four oh oh oh, presented by T-N-I-L Holdings of Texas LLC on behalf of Myron Kent Dove, Judy Dove, John Dove, Gail Dove, Kimberly McGill Dove, trustee and owners of the land. I turn it over to Emily. Thank you.
That was a list. Tonight, we're doing a rezoning request, going from residential R-ten to CP Plan Commercial District. Case number is ZNG zero eight dash two three. The Town of Hope Mills received an application requesting the rezoning of two point two seven acres of land tied to PIN numbers zero four two four dash zero eight dash six seven seven six and zero four two four dash zero eight dash eight five three four. Subject property is located at southwest corner of Elk Road and Legion Road, also known as forty-two fifteen Legion Road. Access to the property will most likely be from Elk Road. That is dependent upon DOT. The case was taken before the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three, where it was voted in favor of the rezoning for CP Plan Commercial District. Southwest Cumberland Use Plan calls for heavy commercial in this location. This request is compliant with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. And here, we're showing the area that it's located in. Well, the, this is the subject property showing the utilities. The water and sewer is right there at the location, easily accessible. And this is the Southwest Land Use Plan showing that it's in the heavy commercial area. All of the red is. And then I have a couple of pictures here showing, you can see there's a circle K right across the street from it on one side, and then we have the Walmart on the other side, and I don't have a picture showing it, but there is also Kaufman Commons directly beside it. So if there's no other questions of me, I leave you guys to open the floor for public hearing.
Okay, motion to open public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone that would like to speak against this?
Mayor, motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close. At this time, is there any discussion from the commissioners?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZNG dash zero zero eight dash twenty-three for the rezoning request to the CP Plan Commercial District and find that the request is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan two thousand and thirteen designation and that it does complement the future vision of the Town of Hope Mills in regards to the future plans of the adjacent parcels. The economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area in regards to economic development viability. Approval of request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested it complements the proposed development of adjacent parcels in the surrounding... it complements the proposed development of adjacent parcels in this surrounding area.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have public comments. At this time, I'd like Ronnie Holland to come and speak.
Ronnie, who? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of First Baptist Church of Hope Mills, forty-six twenty-two Cameron Road. I'm here to announce a Living Water Concert that our church is going to have on September thirtieth at seven o'clock, located at our church. We have entertainment coming, we will have a concert, we've got my band, gospel band is playing, we've got a quartet coming, we've got bagpipes, we've got individuals playing. And what we're doing this for is an outreach ministry for our church and the, and the town and the county of Cumberland and Hope Mills. What we are asking people to do is get the word out for us so we can have a great attendance. And the reason this outreach, we're doing this outreach ministry is to help the CAP program, which is the Kids Assistance Program, which is funded by the Arms House. It's an outreach ministry of the Arms House to help feed children in need, that need meals at certain times. And this is one of the things that, I've done one of these once before, and I want to put this back on because I felt like we wanted, our church wants to give something back to this town and this community, and help those in need, because that's what God asked us to do, is serve, and be service to Him, and look after our fellow man and fellow woman. And we appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the opportunity, my church appreciates the opportunity to come out and speak to you, and invite each and every one of you and everyone listening tonight to come out and support this, this mission of ours. It's free, except if you feel led to make a donation to the CAP program, we'd appreciate it. And I thank you, and I'd like to give each one of you a flyer, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a collection, thank you, sir.
Ms. Jane might need one over there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Mr. Holland, if you could, I know that one that I went to, they provided a list of items that could be brought in lieu of donations, so to put in the backpacks. So they, they had a collection area at the beginning of the, the church, and that's where they put, because I think that, some people will bring those kinds of donations to go in the backpack.
I forgot to get out there, we'll put that out front in the church, and everybody there.
Okay, I'll be there.
Thank you, sir.
And for, for you, for those of you that don't know, the numbers have spiked up, and we're at the beginning of school year already. Matter of fact, the lady that run the program for us, she told me the other day, she said, normally, we don't start sending them out until around the fifteenth of the month, they started pushing them out as early as last week.
And also, if it's, if I'm not out of order, the Kids Assistance Program is something that's, I'm very supportive of, a lot of people don't realize that when we did our food truck rodeos for two years, we were secretly donating, we're collecting supplies for the Kids Assistance Program as well, for the Arms House. So I would like to possibly see if we can engage staff to see over the next two weeks, could we actually possibly donate, or at least raise, not the funds, but collect some of these items. There is a specific list of things that they have on the Arms House website, and so I'll challenge us to see if we can, maybe in the next two weeks, gather some items and donate to this event.
Okay.
Can you put the list on, like, the, one of the Facebook pages or something, and so we can share it?
I'll do that, definitely.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like pulled and, and for discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next item on our, is, we have no old business, new business, consideration of nominating committee recommendations, I'll turn it over to Dr. McCray.
And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Legg.
Thank you. We had to meet earlier this evening to discuss possible appointments, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Glenn Wallace for the Appearance Committee, and Denise Melton for the Veterans Fair Committee.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, you'll be the second, he made the motion.
Okay, yeah, second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next item is what was brought to us, and that's from Mr. Marley, and that's a discussion of the no parking ordinance out on Golf View, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my comments will be directed toward our town manager, attorney, if they want to chime in. To address the parking, I guess, situation on Golf View, Blacks Bridge, whatever portion of road in the curve there, I'd like to know what we need to do to get some no parking signs installed out in that area. If you can tell us what we need to do to move forward with that, I'd appreciate it.
We've discussed this quite often, and ultimately, where we are right now, DOT did an investigation, and our town attorney ultimately researched it through the general statute, and found that we can adopt a no parking ordinance to put no parking signs along DOT railways in our town limits. And so ultimately, before, and I think I've emailed the board as well, before we can officially have our town attorney to start drafting the ordinance, we have to get a general consensus. I think that will require, once we get that, we would engage DOT to let them know of our intentions. I think DOT will ultimately, I think town attorney can confirm this, DOT will ultimately put the signs up in that area, and we will be charged with enforcing the ordinance, but before we can draft the ordinance, we do have to get approval from the board, as this is directly tied to the general statute. But I do.
I'll be willing to put that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
And I second it.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Are we just, just so I'm clear on what we're, this is for me to bring an ordinance before the board for consideration.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. When this issue, and I, I know it was discussed in our email, but I think it's important for the public to know, when we had this discussion with Dirtbag L's, did we go put no parking signs?
To directly address Dr. McCray's comments, when this similar issue was raised at Dirtbag L's, I would admit that it was a much more intense conversation, because they have many more events, and it's a lot more cars. But the position that the town took was, was that it was not a town road, and that it wasn't our jurisdictional authority to do it. We reached out to the Sheriff's Department, who said the same thing, we reached out to the State Troopers, who said the same thing. So DOT did move forward with doing the same type of analysis, and they put the actual no parking signs up, and they are currently enforcing that at Dirtbag L's. So that was always the litmus test for any other situations that occurred in our town, as Dirtbag L's was a very similar situation, and that's the approach that we initially took. However, our town attorney did do the research that tells, tells us we do have that authority, but with the Dirtbag L situation, we simply relied on the expertise from NC DOT.
I'm, I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit, see that, so, you know, Dirtbag L's, you know, people go there to drink, TJ Robinson Center, kids go there to play basketball, and it's, you know, it was, you know, the basketball tournaments are the one that, things that are concerning, you know, it's, we're essentially going to punish kids and their, their parents because there's no available parking, for whatever reason, and so it's a little, it's a little bit different for the situation and the scenario about the whole parking issue. Is there anything has, have, has the town reached out to TJ Robinson to see if they can, since it concerns them, have we reached out to them and say, hey, this is potentially what could happen if it comes to us?
We haven't reached out to them in the very small window that we were talking about instituting the no parking ordinance. We have worked with them in the past that would encourage this, and we can't require this, but we encourage them to do no parking, or at least shared parking agreements with adjacent properties. They have a three acre vacant portion at the rear, we suggested they could possibly gravel that out for existing parking and things of nature. I will say, in reference to the Dirtbag L's situation, that is a very kid-friendly establishment, even though they do have alcohol, there's a significant amount of kids that actually go there as well, and it is a public safety issue. So I'm definitely not denying that at all. I take my kids at Dirtbag L, or my child at Dirtbag L, so it is an actual public safety issue. Ultimately, it's, it's in the hands of the board on how to address it, we were just using Dirtbag L's as an example on how we treated it, but we haven't reached out to, directly to answer your question, we haven't reached out to the TJ Robinson and let them know that we're in the possibility of doing a no parking ordinance, and if she would like to approach an alternative way to reduce the parking, I'm not sure if that's something you guys want to direct me to do.
Because you figure, it's the families who are going to tournaments, are spending the money for these tournaments for their kids to attend, and it's the parents that are going to get fined for them driving the vehicles. It's not TJ Robinson, it's the kids that are getting, you know, families.
That is correct.
And so I would rather, I, I mean, I'd rather us, like, make a motion that we seek for the town to reach out to TJ Robinson and try to remedy at the lowest level before we take it to the highest level and start fining families, where, you know, who knows what can happen.
Madam Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
All right. When a citizen brings an issue of this nature to, to us, we owe due diligence to research it. And I, I stretch it, I talked to Chancellor back and forth on this issue, I say, you know what, you're right, but one thing that stands out in my mind, that I learned when I was in safety school, and they tell you, every accident is preventable, not some, but every one. With that in mind, I said, you know what, you know, we did analysis, and that is true, but what happens is that, that vehicle's on that street, and that child decided that she dropped the duck or something out there, and she darts out there and get hit. Have we done everything as the town to at least do due diligence to have to protect that child? And not only that, when I went to TJ Robinson Center, when they first opened up, they have parking in the back, back there, plenty of parking in the back that they can utilize. But I, based on what I've heard, I'm just repeating, they don't use it, well, the people don't use it because they trying to charge. Now, if you want to be the boss, you got to ride the horse, you know, bottom line up front, you know, you got the space, you want to have events there, open up the area, let the people's park, you know, seriously.
Madam Mayor, I do have a comment, so if that is the case, because I live across the street from that, that establishment as well, it's barely used. The weekend in question was a gun violence prevention event that was in honor of a young man that was killed at Rayford Road in May. They had an event this weekend, I saw one truck on the side of the road. Other than that, over the last at least six months, the building has barely been used. So before, as we just got up here, we support the youth, we want the youth to be all, do all of these things, I do think it would be prudent of us to reach out to them and ask them to open up their parking lot before we go fine this, this establishment that is for use.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would still like for, for a parking ordinance to be drafted and brought back to the board, so we can look at it, we can approve it, that way, there will be an ordinance on the books that we don't have at this time. So if we do come across these situations, we, we will have an ordinance, and if we choose to put signs up, not only, not only there, but other parts of town too, then we have an ordinance that we can move forward with. But I, I would still ask the board to direct the attorney to bring us back a ordinance for us to review and possibly approve.
And just one thing to mention also, is that when Dirtbag L's was faced with this, they now have gotten additional parking, they've enlarged their parking lot, and even sometimes, that's not enough, but if you'll notice, they addressed it by adding more parking, and there is land there that could possibly be more parking, and if she is, or if the group is currently charging for parking, and that's why they're not going in that parking lot, then that might be something else to address with the owner, is that, you know, this could be prevented if you use every one of your spaces, and the potential for more. And I know there's a church on either side, that I guarantee with the churches, if they, if they would go discuss with them, there's potential there, I would think, to share, if they partnered with the churches.
If I'm surmising what I'm hearing, it sounds like that with Commissioner Scrolly, Mayor Potem, Dr. McCray, we can reach out to the establishment to let them know what our concerns are and what could possibly happen, but to also talk, deal with what Mr. Commissioner Marley is saying is, we can still draft an ordinance, we can decide where and where apply, but draft it for consideration, and we still have the conversation with the business owner to let them know what's going on. And then, at that point, because if you're directing us to draft it, that is not the approval of the ordinance. Once we have the discussion and do a little bit more deep dives and due diligence, like Commissioner Mitchell said, then we decide on what the plan of action is, but I definitely agree with the approach of, of having our town attorney to draft it, but reaching out to the establishment first.
Sound like a plan.
And it might be a good idea, yeah.
That way, at the next meeting, we'll have both a potential ordinance and some more information after.
And it might be a good idea to ask, what do they recommend as far as a solution? That if, if there's a concern enough that there's a need for no parking signs, what is there, do they have a solution? And I'm, I'm wondering, do they have, is there a certain number of people that can be in that building? Because that might be something else to look into, the fact you're supposed to have enough parking spaces for the people going inside, and I'm just wondering, if there's vacant spaces because they're charging, that might be, you might have to give up the charging so you could get everybody in those spaces.
I will say that there, there are, definitely aren't out of compliance with the number of parking spaces, it's more of a business decision on operating. I will echo Dr. McCray's sentiments that I frankly don't see a frequency of events, but to tie it in with what Commissioner Mitchell said, it only take one, takes one accident for it to be a tragic situation.
Madam Mayor, is CJ Robinson charging to park, or the people who own the land back there?
They own the actual land, I can't speak on directly, direct knowledge of the charging of parking, I have heard that, but I don't, I don't know that to be something that I have proven to happen, but that's what I have heard. So I definitely will reach out to her tomorrow to have that conversation, because I do think, like Commissioner Scrolly said, before we start charging and fining, let's have a conversation and see if there's a more amicable solution to address the issue directly.
I think we should, I think we should be the nice guy first.
Before the record, that charge is a rum of what I was told. Yes, I, just for the record.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, we've had discussion, any other discussion? All right, the motion is to direct our attorney to bring back with, to us a no parking ordinance. So all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
And the research, right.
And the research that goes with it. Okay, so that's all in favor, none against. Thank you. All right, next, we have managers' report, any additions to your report, or anything that you'd like to?
No additions, but I would definitely like to speak to a milestone. We are finally here to announce the groundbreaking for Heritage Park. That is something that is a long time coming, I've been here almost ten years, and it was an idea, and it was a small study from NC State when I first got here, and to have this, and this is speaking on the skate park initiative, to have this fully funded and ready for construction is a major milestone. It'll be on October sixth at four P.M. Staff is currently working to get the program together, but I definitely want to bring that to our attention, commend our police department, we're currently in September dates for our Walk with a Cop initiative. Kudos to our staff on the United Way meal packing event that we did on August twenty-fourth, I think we packed seventy thousand meals, I think, or something to that effect. This nine eleven tribute, but one thing that happened this past Friday that I think should be brought to everyone's attention is, I think we picked up about forty-five bags of trash this past Friday. We're currently in the next couple of weeks of the litter sweep statewide with NC DOT, and town staff elected. and town staff elected, department heads, and we got together and did a significant cleanup this past weekend. And finally, the Mid Carolina Regional Council on area on aging, and agency on aging, they had a senior expo at the Bill Crisp Center recently. And so I reached out to them because I wanted them to come have that same event here. We're working with them to schedule that, but in the manager's report, there's three events that I want to start highlighting. They have one on the thirty-first of October, basically guiding elderly on understanding Medicaid, how to navigate through. And so as we try to build a partnership with them to do something specifically in Hope Mills, I told them that I wanted them to see us supporting their event. So you'll see some of those events advertised in the manager's report on our website as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the manager, for the manager's report? Okay, at this time, we have, any staff comments? Okay, we do have a closed session on our agenda, so at this time, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call a closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three eight three eighteen eleven A three, Attorney Client Privilege and NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven A six personnel.
Okay, and at this time, have a second?
Second.
At this time, we will be moving to our front conference room and we'll be back as quickly as possible. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Is there no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, thank you for being here this evening.
And don't forget, get these barbecue dinners!